I'm really bad.
Six twenty-nine.
No, no, that clock is fast. I just want to show you.
I know, but I gotta go my math class.
I know, but I've been late twice, but I'm really not late.
Okay, so it's six thirty-two and I called the August twelfth planning board meeting to order. And first on the agenda are meeting minutes, Mr. Secretary.
There were no corrections in minutes, I recommend approval.
Okay.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Any comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We do not have, I believe, any A and Rs. No, none came in. Okay. And so we move on to discussion. Applicant Nathan Ellis Highway LLC, special permit modification to update the equipment list, expand hours of operation, and allow outside parking of vehicles accessory to the primary use of the contractor's yard located at two ten Nathan S. Ellis Highway, East Falmouth. And remember, folks, this is just our discussion tonight of what we've heard. And mentioning that Ken is not here tonight, but he is eligible to vote because he was here for the entire hearing process. And he was here last week and he will be here the next time around, too. So, excuse me. You got in your email a couple of pages.
Pardon?
Yes.
Explain that to me again. If he's not here tonight, he's still eligible to vote?
Yes, he is, because he was here for the entire hearing process. And I just wanted to bring that out.
But he doesn't take part of these discussions, but it still makes me...
No, he took part in the discussion last week. He's missing this one.
Okay.
Okay?
I just wanted to understand the process.
Yeah, but he will be here the next time and take part also. So, yeah, that is fine. You just can't miss the hearing. Okay?
Thank you.
Yep. I know, I've always had questions on that, too. But, so I just figured I would bring that out tonight because especially our viewing audience would probably like to know that, too. So, what you have in your email is some format, a potential format, to give us some guidance for discussion because this is a rather complex issue. And first issue that we really need to discuss is the definition of contractor's yard. Because that's what we're talking about, is a contractor's yard under K in A and double A districts. And there's a bunch of stuff under here. So, we have to understand whether the permit modification meets the definition of contractor's yard. Contractor's yard, premises used by a building or construction contractor or subcontractor principally for storage of equipment and supplies, fabrication of sub-assemblies, and parking of wheeled equipment. So, I'd really like to focus our discussion on that right now to see whether we believe that what is being asked of us is possible under this definition.
Well, bearing in mind that we're in an agricultural district and it's a contractor's yard, and I think all the equipment lists and everything, I'm okay with the natural growth of that part of the business. And even the encroachments, I'm not that concerned with because it's such a good site. The thing that I'm grappling with is the expansion of the dumpster use. Because originally, when I was at this last meeting, we had our last discussion, I said, "Well, the previous planning board approved the dumpsters, so that's a given." But then after reading more about the previous decisions and realizing that the reason it's okay as an accessory to the contractor's yard is because it was for C and D, I think was the intent. And that was to help with demolition of buildings during excavation and procedures like that. So, now we gotta, you know, and you never know how your business is going to grow as opportunities arise. So, now what we have is more of a commercial refuse management sort of a thing, which is more than the accessory to the contractor's use. But at the same time, it's a business that fits pretty well there, except for the couple of issues with noise occasionally. And I don't want to be the one to say it doesn't, you know, we can't have it. But say, for instance, we approve the accessory use of the dumpsters, and then the building is, the property is sold to some other company that wants to even expand further. So, where do we draw the line? So, to me, I'm thinking that we don't want to put Mr. Cavosa in a bad position. I think that what's there should be allowed to stay. But maybe there should be some sort of a time limit, a timeframe, to where we should either have the property get rezoned to something that's more in line with this kind of a operation. Or maybe then Mr. Cavosa would know that eventually, I mean, as he said himself, eventually he's going to outgrow this site. Maybe he's already thinking in terms of other locations. So, I won't feel comfortable just completely saying it's okay to have the dumpster business. But at the same time, I don't want to prevent a guy from working. So, I'm a little conflicted on exactly, to me, it seems clear that it doesn't fit. But yet, it could if the zoning were changed. Maybe, you know, another attempt at a zoning change would be successful. I don't know exactly how, what would go. That's my initial thoughts.
Okay, I'm going to end the scene here on your thought process because we're dealing with the zoning by law that we have, not what might be.
Right.
And that's a long process. We have to bring up a change or a whole new by law. Either a change to a by law or a whole new by law, which then goes through the whole process and then has to go through town meeting, which may or may not. So, and I understand exactly where you're coming from with that. We are dealing with two different companies under one umbrella, Cavosa Excavation and Cavosa Disposal, which you brought up. One fits, the other one doesn't. Jim?
Are we dealing with these questions in order or just in general?
Yes.
Well, on question number one, I think yes, that 151 is sufficient width and grades and travel to the site for the vehicle storage?
No, we're dealing right now with contractor's yard and...
Contractor's yard, not question one?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I understand. Now I see where we're going off. What I see is the original, they were talking about thirty percent of it for storage of equipment for other uses other than the contractor's yard. And as long as they stay with that thirty percent, I'm okay with it.
Even though the zoning by law doesn't allow it?
I thought it did allow thirty percent.
Not for any usage?
No, for other, other uses. He, I mean, they already had dumpsters there to begin with. So, we're really talking about, I mean, if you're going to talk about what goes in the dumpster, is that our, as long as they stay within the, I thought I heard something, and maybe I'm wrong, but there was a, an idea that the, that this other use had to be only thirty percent of the site.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking on the last...
And I think as long as they stay within that, I'm okay with that.
You mean a usage that doesn't conform to the by law? Can be thirty percent of the site.
No, I didn't say that.
Well, that was our base of our discussion at the last meeting. But that was based on the premise that the previous planning board had, now, it was before giving it more thought, but that was my comment on the last one. Because I said, "Well, the previous planning board has allowed the dumpster use. So, to me, it's already there. It's already given. And as long as it stays within thirty percent of the site, it's still an accessory." But then during the last week, reading more about the planning board's intent, from what it seemed to me, although it's not clear in the decision, it just says allowing fourteen dumpsters. But through the process, it seemed like it was just to be the accessory to supplement the construction business. That's just the, that's just what I got from it.
Okay, I'm going to jump in because I was the only board member here at the time. And yes, it was only to supplement the construction business for C and D. And it was actually twelve dumpsters, and there could be three additional ones covered overnight in case there was a late arrival of refuse from construction sites and then to be hauled within a day. Or if it happened over a weekend, you know, it could be hauled on Monday. But they had to be covered, those that, so you could potentially have a total of fifteen, the way I read it. But it was extremely limited to twelve dumpsters with the potential for three more on-site covered. That's the way I read it.
Okay, Bob?
Yeah, I look at the dumpsters, not as a dumpster. I look at it as a piece of equipment. If this was a builder who's building large buildings and you use a lot of scaffolding, pipe scaffolding, you need that for, for your business and you're trucking it on and off-site all the time. And as long as the area that meets the by law or your permit or whatever is used for that purpose, I don't really have a problem with that. I think we're getting caught up in the dumpster. It's not a transfer site, so that's not the issue. It's just the matters, the space that the dumpsters are taking up. And I think if you substituted something else for that space, I see, I don't see where it doesn't meet the premise of the contractor's yard.
Paul?
I agree with the by law. I think we have to look at thirty percent level. The thing that makes me uncomfortable in the definition is the fabrication of sub-assemblies. I think that's open to a lot of interpretation. We've heard some discussion about putting hydrants together. Well, hydrants come as a unit. You don't put those together. And if, if the fabrication of sub-assemblies is meant to mean repairs to equipment or attaching snowplows to equipment to go out, that's one thing. But I think it's a little awkward to fabrication of sub-assemblies because that leaves a lot of interpretation to what's really going on. I think it has to be germane to what the purpose of the contractor's yard is and not leave it open for interpretation of someone else. So, that's the one I'm a little uncomfortable with, that term.
Okay, then I would ask you a question, too, which is what we're discussing here. The original intent in the permit was for C and D. And over the last twelve years, refuse collection has been added to that without coming before us for definitions as to whether that could happen or not. Are you, Paul, comfortable with the addition of refuse trash collection?
Well, it's not a storage facility. It's storage of equipment. So, no trash is being stored on-site. The dumpsters are not filled on-site. They're just empty dumpsters, as I understand it. So, I don't think that's really relevant on trash collection. If he goes into some other kind of heavy equipment other than trash collection, I don't think we can limit that. But the dumpsters that are stored there are equipment that are stored there. Same as the trucks and whatever facilities he has in there are stored. And I don't, I don't have a problem with the list of equipment.
Okay. Ralph?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with the list of the equipment. It seems like a natural growth of, growth of the business as Doug has indicated. But when you look at what's being stored there and you look at the definition, it looks like there's also a landscaping business going on. And, you know, I don't know, it's, I don't have an, I don't really have an issue with that. I guess it's a contractor's yard. A contractor could be a landscaper, I guess. I'm just basically, it's, it's basically, I don't have a problem with the definition right now.
Okay.
I have a question. Fabrication of sub-assemblies, is that not part of the original by law? Isn't that the original language that's allowed in the contractor's yard?
It is.
So, that's allowed?
Yep.
It is.
Okay.
Okay. I do have a problem. Because when you look at this by law, it distinctly says "by a building or construction contractor." And refuse collection is not mentioned in there. So, we're adding to our by law by allowing that. And that's, I'm going to ask you to think about that a little bit harder. I'm not saying that we don't need that in this town, but I'm, I am saying it does not fit what the by law says. Because if you can convince me that somehow a building or construction contractor is also a refuse collector, I just don't understand how you can tuck that under there and say, "It's okay."
Well, C and D is a form of refuse.
It's building.
No, but I think if you were to look up, you know, refuse, they would define it as municipal waste, other waste, and construction and demolition. It's all part of a general group, at least in my experience. It's all part of, you know, a type of waste removal. And what he's really doing is expanding that component. But he already had, I mean, dumpster, dumpster. He put trash in it. Or they didn't used to, until the state changed the definitions, a lot of the stuff went in the same basket.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And then I, I did millions of dollars of waste management type things. And I forget exactly when it was. But it was sometime in the, I don't know the year. But in sometime in my career, all of a sudden, they started defining it and limiting portions of this and that. But there was, at one time, it all went in the same bucket.
Hmm, okay.
And the change is a state law that they tried to enforce recycling. And it might have been in, you know, I don't, I don't want to get the year, but I remember when it happened. And we had to modify the, our, instead of just having one big compactor where we did, you know, a hundred tons of waste a year, we had to have two or three compactors. And the, and the construction guys, we couldn't mix the C and D in. They had to bring trucks and take out it separately. So, it's more adapting to changes in the state law that created the separate waste streams. And I think it's all taken place in the last fifteen or twenty years. That's my experience with the waste.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, with the closing of a lot of the landfills and, you know, I'm sure Doug, you used to haul your own trash to the dump. I know I did in the towns that I've built in. And it's changed. We don't have those local landfills that you can just haul stuff to. And so, a waste contractor is just as integral to building today as your foundation people, your, your concrete guys. It's just part of the whole package. I mean, you build that into the cost of, of building now. So, and I agree with Jim. We are trying to wrestle with changes in the law and how waste is handled. And I really can't separate a waste contractor from a concrete contractor as far as the use of a piece of property for operating your business.
Okay, so the board feels that the expansion of the definition is okay?
It, it really is a hauling business, okay? It's not really a waste, you know, he's hauling. He's hauling C and D or now, and he's also hauling with the, they have an abbreviation for municipal waste or something like that. But it's a trucking and hauling business. And it's, I mean, that's, that's what we're talking about. Not just, I mean, and since we, he was, had a hauling business with, with dumpsters there, he was hauling, you know. I, I, I think if you really look hard into it, you find this is a reaction to the state changes in the laws.
Okay.
Natural progression.
Okay, so what you're saying is that it does fit the definition of a contractor's yard, the entirety of the business that is taking place there now?
So, just another thought. So, say we had some big corporation came to town and applied for a contractor's yard in some other agricultural area, and their only business was refuse collection and dumpsters and stuff. Would we then say that that fits?
That's the base question.
Because being that this is a contractor's yard in agricultural zone, this could happen in a lot of places in town. So, it might be a little more than we're expecting in some neighborhoods.
Right.
I'm going to say that this is a good neighborhood, and there has been a couple of neighbors that have been affected, but it's still a pretty good location.
But that's why I qualified my statement, talking about the thirty percent.
And it's expansion of an existing business.
Yes, but staying within the, the usage of the site, we heard testimony that they're still within the thirty percent for this component. Unless, if I remember, that's what I heard.
And so then anything that we would approve along those lines, I would think would have to be sort of conditioned on the fact that this is an existing business that's grown into this position. So, we're not setting a precedent that some other big nationwide company can come and buy a little piece of land. Because this is something that it's needed, definitely needed. We don't really have a place for it in town. We don't have any industrial land. We don't have a place where Mr. Cavosa could go in town. So, there's no, I have no suggestion of what to do, other than I feel like it, it should remain. But there should be some kind of, something where we can put the brakes on it so it doesn't get out of control with some other site.
Okay. Because what you do have to remember is that under our by law, again, in an AGA district, it shall not be located within five hundred feet of a single residence district. And with an AGA district, it shall not be located within three hundred feet of a single residence district.
Is that a single residence district or a single residence?
Single residence district. Okay.
So, there are protections in place already?
There are some in place.
So, we're not there.
But we're sort of, we're sort of bypassing them now.
Yeah, we are.
Is there not also a three hundred foot rule for an actual residence? I remember hearing that on, looking at that on others. Can I ask our administrator, is there, is a requirement that these contractor yards?
You're going to ask it through me tonight. We're going to be very formal here tonight. So, through me.
I recall on other hearings, particularly one on Sandwich Road, where we were looking at a contractor's yard, and the concern was not the district, but actually a single residence within three hundred feet. And they weren't, they, no, they, that's what we looked at. I was wondering, is that a requirement of this by law?
Marlene, do you know?
If you look at thirty-eight K four, Pat, if you want, if you want to read that?
Okay. For AGA districts, the lot shall not be located within five hundred feet of a single residence district, nor within five hundred feet of a dwelling existing or for which construction had commenced. And...
Okay, that's, so it's five hundred, not three hundred?
Well, for AGA, AGA, it's three hundred. And the sizes of the lots that can be converted to a...
Or construction, is this conforming? My question, is this conforming to that?
I couldn't answer that question. I think it's greater than five hundred feet, but I don't know how close the residences are on Cloverleaf.
Cloverfield?
Cloverfield, I'm sorry. I always want to call it Cloverleaf.
I, I actually checked it. I wasn't sure. But I thought it was three fifty, four hundred when I did my inaccurate Google Earth map measuring it. That was, because the Cloverfield comes down, and there, the first end of Cloverfield doesn't have a residence on it. It's kind of used as a storage area. And then the next house is down a little further. And I, I guess we should ask someone, an engineer or somebody for Claire. I don't want to be going on record saying, giving you testimony. It didn't appear to me.
Okay, so we want to have that.
I'd like to know that, that it's con, I really want to know whether it's conforming or non-conforming. That's my question.
Okay. So, Marlene can find that out. But it only refers to the single residence district or a residence. And in my mind, we are also dealing with the senior care zoning across 151. And I don't know how far away that is.
But I, I think this speaks to what's, whether it's in construction or permitted.
It does.
My concern is, is it conforming? Because if, if they're, I have a different view if they're expanding a non-conforming use. Okay, that's a different, you know, that's my question.
I understand.
And that's, that's where I'm going with this point. And I just need to have that answer.
Okay, so you need to know how close this is to...
I just need to know if it's conforming, yes or no.
Yeah, okay, conforming, yes or no. But it's essentially how close. Okay. Are there any other questions? Yes, Ralph?
I don't have a question, but I know you want to stay with the definition. But when you go down to question three, you see that there are two distinct businesses operating there. There's an excavation business and a disposal business. So, going back to your issue about does a building or construction contractor include the disposal portion of the business that's going on there right now? That's a very valid question that you have. And it's not, you know, you can get into point of, at what point does the disposal business start? Does it start when it, when you pick up the trash? And does it end when you dispose of it in a landfill or, or a transfer station? Or, or does it start with the purchase of vehicles and equipment that allows you to do that and then operating it? So, I, I, I'm... So I, I, I'm sorry to have to jump leapfrog to question number three, but it refers back to what we're talking about right now. And I don't know, I don't know how to, I, I'm, I'm anxious to hear other board members' position. I mean, I've, I've heard some comments already. I'm not sure we should move, move on to question number one. Yeah?
We haven't.
I know.
That's why this is, this is a hangup here.
Yeah.
Because our further decisions on this issue go back to that. And I think it's all well and good to say disposal, it's all well and good to say trash, but the dumpsters have a lot of garbage in them, and that's another way of putting what we're looking at here. These are garbage dumpsters too, and they are provided by the disposal company. It's not just haulage, it's provision. I'm not arguing whether we need the service or not. We do need the service.
Yeah.
It's whether we can put it under this bylaw, whether it fits under the bylaw. I think if it doesn't fit under the bylaw, I'm not sure that there is another bylaw that it could fit under.
That's the problem.
I know it is.
We don't have a bylaw that deals with disposal businesses that I know of, even though we have certain rulings such as the Board of Health made, when, when you can operate it, you know, when you can pick up your trash.
Which has nothing to do with our decision.
I know, I know, but it, they're, they're, they're talking about rules that don't, that don't apply to any other bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
But I know them, so I don't know what to do.
Well, I would suggest that you cannot take the Board of Health ruling into consideration.
No, I, I'm not. I'm just taking, I'm just saying that that's an example of what's going on here.
Right. Paul, I see you're deeply thinking here.
I'm deep in thinking, but I can't add to that right now. I don't know. I do have a bylaw. I don't know how you do that, except you have a new bylaw, propose a new bylaw to address these issues, and that may be something we have to consider.
Mm-hmm. So our question right now is, can the business fit under the current bylaw?
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, my notes say that, that the dumpsters were, were, for, for construction debris were included in the 2002 decision.
Correct.
But that was for construction debris, not for trash.
That is correct. And I also want to point out that that 2002 decision was for 12 dumpsters with the potential for three to be covered.
Yeah.
In case they were hauled too late to go to a disposal site. So if we decide that, yes, it can fit under here, then we're going to have a lot of other decisions made on, on that basis. If we decide that the disposal part of it cannot fit under this bylaw, we still have many other decisions to make going down. But it, that would determine what kinds of equipment are on the site. So that's why I'm really pushing on this definition first, that we have to decide whether it can fit or not fit.
One possible solution might be that we condition the, this application to include the disposal of trash for a limited period of time until we revisit and maybe establish a new definition for disposal businesses, which we can do, which you could do at a town meeting. And we could, it would probably, wouldn't happen until the spring now.
At least the spring.
Yeah. But on the other hand, well, I'm getting into my, my position, which is addressed later on in the questions, about allowing the, our decision to be effective until December 31, and then re, relook at the whole thing. That would give us an opportunity between now and then to look at how we're going to deal with contractors who want to, who want to be in the disposal business. Contractor, a contract, whether we would want to expand a contractor's yard definition to include the disposal of trash instead of just construction debris.
And I believe Brian indicated last time that we could, in fact, do that. And if we decided at that point that it didn't mesh right, that we could pull the permit? That doesn't seem right either.
The permit just expires, that's all.
But we've never done that before. I don't know if we can legally. So that's another...
The health department doesn't seem to have any problems with doing it.
They're a different animal than we are.
Yeah, maybe so.
Doug had his hand up first.
So also, we have another reason to want to revisit our contractor's yard bylaws, because there are other accessory uses too that have come up to be discussed that we need to, to work through. So that's a future project.
Which if there's a lot of stuff to be discussed, I doubt we're going to even see it at a spring town meeting.
Well, not that it's a lot, but we just need to, there are probably other revisions that need to be made while we work on that.
But I'm thinking about the timeline. It usually has to be done by January.
I see.
So that's why I suspect it wouldn't happen until fall.
Mm-hmm.
I have a go in there. Jim?
I, we had a, we spent months when we were working through the wind turbine bylaw, trying to define, define what, what the primary and other uses were, and we never really could do it. It was the hardest thing. I think the most important thing is not what's going in the bucket, but the number of buckets. And that's, that's the way I think we should look at this, and if it's, if it's 30% of the, the primary use, our bylaw says that, I don't want, I don't think we should be telling them, you can't put this in that bucket.
Our bylaw doesn't say that.
Well, I thought, I thought it has something about 30%, or maybe the permit. I would clearly remember hearing testimony about restriction of this site being 30% for other uses, other than construction.
I remember the 30%, I do not remember the context.
I remember a picture, a graph, testimony, and that, that's really, I thought that was what we were, what we were deciding on. That's what I think we should be talking about. What percentage can be another use? Not, because you know what? Some days they could tell trash in one compactor, and the next day it could have construction debris in it, you know, it could have.
I'm just trying to remember, though, was the 30% the coverage by dumpsters?
Other uses, I think.
I don't remember that. I thought it was more specific.
Well, I think we just discussed the fact that it would be a 30% accessory...
Use.
Use to the primary use. 30% of the volume of the area. And I think we're within that, because when you measure these areas, they're well within that.
Okay.
So I think if that's going to be the guideline, then it fits. If, if we have a fundamental concern about the nature of that accessory use fitting on the property, I mean, I think there is a concern, but at the same time, I'd like to find a way to, to work through it. But just don't want to set a precedent that this could happen in any neighborhood with a contractor yard.
And that's what we're opening it up to.
Right. So if there can be specific language, and maybe Marlene can tell me, if there's some way, because it's a special permit involved, if there can be specific language to somehow accept a use that's marginally non-conforming, but yet not set a precedent in other areas. Is there some way we can do that?
Off the top of my head, I can't think of a good way right now, but we can certainly, we can certainly look at that. So you can't use the word non-conforming though, because you're issuing a permit. So explain to me exactly what it is you, you want more information on.
Just whether or not, by the nature of the special permit, we can say that this is a specific site that we can work with a use that, I mean, to me, it doesn't fit the definition of the agricultural or the contractor yard, but that's just my impression. I think other board members feel that it does. So that, I mean, I could be persuaded to, to agree with that, but I just don't want to say that this could, this type of use could fall in any neighborhood. So I don't know exactly what would be crafted, but that would be my hope, that something could be.
Doug, you're not the only one who feels that this doesn't fit the definition. I feel it doesn't as well.
Yeah, but then again, practically speaking, it seems like it fits. So that's a tough, tough one for me.
I, I still see it as storage of, of equipment. It's a place you're going to take your, your stuff. What, what you put in it is inconsequential to me. It's, I mean, if it was a bunch of wood chippers, or if these trucks were enclosed like the old days where you had the trash guys come along and had the compactor in the back of the truck, if those were being parked out there, I, I just don't, as long as waste isn't being transferred out there or processed out there, to me, it's just a place to put your stuff.
I feel, I feel the same way about it, just that, I'm just looking at the, the fact that it's an agricultural and it's only a contractor yard. So that was my point from before. If we decide something, does that mean that somebody else can come along, buy a piece of land in Hatchville somewhere, get a contractor yard, and then have by right permission to have a business similar to this or something, another accessory use that may be more volumous than what we might expect in a, a neighborhood with a contractor yard? So I think then, as long as it can be tailored just to this site, I'd like to see that happen, but I'm just wary of, of setting a precedent, and I don't know enough about our business to know if that's what would be happening.
Yeah, I don't know how you can tailor it either.
Well, I, I'm not sure, but they call it a special permit, so we're, I think a special is unique, and we're looking at this one site. I understand Doug's concern, but I think that's the idea we're saying, does this fit on this site?
As long as, as long as that would be the case.
But not, I don't think we're rewriting that it goes on any site anywhere.
Well, that's all, that's only my concern.
See, that's the thing. In my mind, this is a great site.
I don't know, but that's the way I feel about it. I think it's specific, site-specific.
No. In my mind, this is a great site for it.
Mm-hmm.
But now we're dealing with the definition. And like Doug, does that mean, okay, it's Katie by, by the door? Anybody can take a five-acre site in an AGAA district and do the same thing right next to residences?
Well, if it needs to setback requirements and the lot coverage requirements, I don't see why not.
I do, but, you know, it's...
Hundreds of feet of setback, right? Either three or five, we're not going to have.
I, can I ask another question?
Yeah.
Would, would any contractor yard in any location have some sort of special permit attached to it, or are they just?
They all do.
They all are.
They're only done by special permit.
So then we wouldn't be giving up anything?
Right, that's, that was my point.
Because every, every one then, in the future, would be site-specific, and we would have purview. So we wouldn't really be creating...
We have a special permitting granting authority for this, this type of special permit.
So then we would not be creating something that we couldn't control.
Right.
So I guess then this is not, my concern is not really valid.
And as, as an example, if you look at the one on Thomas Land, is, this couldn't happen because right across the street is residences. So something like this could not be put there.
Okay. Ralph?
Okay. Now I'm really going to split hairs here, looking at the definition. It says, "A building contractor, a building or construction contractor or subcontractor." Now, if you're a building contractor and you decide to sub out certain portions of what you're doing, you could sub out the electrical, plumbing, landscaping, all kinds of things. You could also sub out hauling away garbage that's created by the construction workers during the process, in addition to demolition and, and, and construction debris. So if, you know, I mean, that's really, that's a stretch. That's a real stretch, and, and splitting a hair here on the definition. Because a subcontractor is a very, sort of a broad term, really. I think all of, all of you that are involved in, Bob and Jim and, and Doug, in construction and development, I, I would think you'd probably agree that a subcontract, a definition of a subcontractor is rather broad term. Maybe not, but it sounds to me like it covers a myriad of things. And it could include the removal of trash and garbage that's created during a construction project. So in that case, we could consider whether or not the Cavosa disposal business is appropriate and legitimate at this site. Just a thought.
You mean as a subcontractor?
As a subcontractor, yeah.
I'd have difficulty with that, Ralph.
I, I'm not saying it's, I'm, I'm just saying, it's a consideration.
Move on to another question?
We can move on. We haven't made any decision here.
Well, we can't make a decision tonight anyway, right?
No, I mean, we're not in total consensus here, I think. I'm counting Doug is troubled, I am troubled, Ralph is, I think, a bit troubled. So there are three of us who are troubled and three of us who are not.
Well, you know, given the, the last part that we talked about, the fact that any future contractor yard would still come under a special permit, if that's clear that that's the case, then I'm less concerned.
Okay.
Because we can consider each site specifically for whatever use is proposed.
Okay. And I've been here long enough to know we get hammered by the attorneys. Well, you allowed it for.
Yeah.
So just be aware to, that it does tend to happen. So it seems like, okay, we say, since we can control it, because we are the authorities on the special permit, that with enough description as to the why of it, we're going to be okay with it.
Mm-hmm.
And that the description would have to be sufficient so that somebody couldn't come in and hammer us.
And also when, if it comes up and we refer and we say, well, this is a Falmouth contractor that's grown in that location, and maybe that's up to us to decide.
Okay.
It, it seems strange to me that this, this is very, very broad and very vague in a lot of the definitions here, whereas other bylaws, it's so specific as to exactly what you can do. And, I mean, we go down to how many seats you can have in a restaurant.
I know.
And yet this is so broad, and I agree with Ralph about the subcontract. I mean, what if it was a tree service out there with stump grinders and chippers and things like that that were being stored out there? Is that really construction? You know, so it, it, the broadness of this definition is... the broadness of this definition is, is a little troubling. And I think that's where we're stuck, is it's hard to make a decision based on these definitions. Because you could, you could, you know, dissect all of these and come up with validation for just about anything.
That's what I was saying. I think we need to revisit and do a little more work on that.
On the definition?
Yeah. And the parameters of, you know, what accessory limits would be.
And even the bylaw itself.
Right.
Get all together. It's an, an appropriate time to do it, since we're looking at the bylaws. Okay, so...
I just also think it's important, I agree with everything, all the different processes, but we're talking about storage of the equipment. You know, not using, not stump grinding, not processing. We're parking it there. So that's...
No, let's go on a little further. Because one of these is gonna be used.
Well, that's, that's okay.
So we're gonna go on further.
Right, well, I know, on this one, we're talking about storage. Then I'm agreeing.
Okay.
Other things, we're, a whole new subject.
Okay. So let's go on to question one. Is the construction width and grades of Nathan Ellis Highway Route 151 sufficient for safe travel to and from the site by the vehicles to be stored? And you have to look at the whole list here of the vehicles.
Yes.
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 If it can't handle it, what road can?
Well, I know, that, that would be, I figured that was gonna be an automatic.
Yeah.
So we have no problems with that. Okay. Question two. Now here's where we get sticky again. The hours of operation shall be 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM, except for emergencies, comma, snow plowing. 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, except for emergencies, comma, snow plowing. No change in hours of operation, which are 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM, except for emergencies, comma, snow plowing. Discussion. We'd already discussed that we didn't want it open 24/7.
Well, I was the first one to say the 5 to 10, because I get up at 5:00.
So do I. And I'm usually asleep between 9:30 and 10 o'clock, so that fits my schedule too.
And I'm sure it'll bother some people, but it's an early riser's time to start working if you need to get somewhere, if you need to travel a couple hours to, to get to work.
I don't have a problem with 5 to 10.
Okay.
We were talking about two eight-hour shifts. It'd be 16 hours, so it would be 5 to 9:00, or 6 to 10:00. That's what we were talking about last time. So what we can do is do 16 hours conditional on, see what kind of complaints we have, the discussion was last time. Last time, there was a discussion on conditionality. Can we do this for a period of time, say six months, or as the Board of Health did till the end of the year, and assess this at that time. Perhaps we'll have a better definition of contractor's yard by then also.
Ralph?
Yeah, I just wanna reemphasize my position about the fact that this board advocates housing in areas that are also used for commercial purposes. And if we, if we do that, and if we say that there are apartments and condominiums and so forth above retail areas that are gonna use and that are gonna require trash removal, you have to take that into consideration when you're talking about the hours. You can't just assume that the two are separated, that all the trash is picked up in a commercial area and all the people live over here. You can't do that. That's not what we're advocating. That's not what we're working towards. So 24-hour trash removal doesn't make sense to me.
We're asking, does 5 to 10, 6 to 10?
Right, the 24 hour.
Or 6 to 8, the three questions?
Because that's what we were talking about.
We already killed the 24 hours.
Right. That's what we were talking about the last time. My question would be whether the site opens at 5:00. And so then it's gonna be 5:15, 5:30 before any of the trucks.
Right.
Or gee whiz, we'll open at 4:30 so we can get our trucks on site. So I think we need to make it clear that the site would open at 5:00.
Well, that's our purview, is the site. And what they do in other places in town is up to their discretion.
Or the Board of Health.
And they're gonna have to be careful and not create noise complaints that they'll have to deal with.
Right. So what we would say is, open at 5:00, close the site at 10:00. Is that, I'm hearing a consensus on that.
And if there's gonna be some 2:00 AM trash pickup, it's gonna have to be based somewhere else or, or something.
It's gonna have to be, yeah, because it can't be based here. Because we're saying it can't be open after 10:00 at night. So then it would have to be off-site, that that would originate. And there's no prohibition about that. I mean, wherever. But it can't...
Except we do, do have emergencies and snow plowing. Let's say that there was...
Well, that's, that's already...
That's different. And we do have that, and that's absolutely right. And there is no prohibition against that.
And there's also allowance for emergencies with the dumpsters, because occasionally there will, something will come up. And there is some wording somewhere in there for that. I don't remember if that's something that's written down, or just that we talked about.
It wasn't. We just talked about it. The police sometimes call Mr. Cavosa for an emergency handling of a dumpster, or the fire department. So that's not snow plowing, that's a different type of emergency. But I don't think an overflowing dumpster is an emergency. Some people might think it is, but...
Ralph did.
What?
Ralph did, overflowing dumpster.
We had to fight for, at Habitat for Humanity, we just couldn't get it emptied.
So are we on...
With a different country.
Bob, you want to say something?
Yeah. So the doors open at 5:00. I just had, actually I had a question for Doug. What time can you start? Can you fire up a generator if you're using it?
Seven.
Seven.
Yeah. So, I mean, we're, we're under restrictions too.
We've got the noise bylaws.
Yeah.
They still has to stay with the noise bylaw. We're not freeing them up from that.
Yeah. But I still leave the house earlier than seven to get to the job I started at seven.
Right, right. Yeah.
Laying out cables, getting it all lined up.
Yeah. So, you know, you gotta give you guys, if they're gonna, their day is gonna start, they're driving out the gate at 5:00. They're gonna be there before then. But then, it's like Doug says, I mean, I'm, I'm over there at 6 o'clock, 6:30 in the morning, getting stuff ready too.
Must seem to be early risers on this board.
But I, but I can't fire up my, when I was running on generator, I couldn't fire up a generator till after 7:00.
No, you can't.
So, I mean, that, that would be the thing. I mean, you have to get, if you're being paid from 5:00 to, 5:00 to 3:00 or whatever your hours are, you know, you should be out the door at 5:00. So I, I think that, that should be the start time, when they can actually get out of the gate.
Well, remember, principally, we're talking about disposal activities here. And Ralph suggested that we have a first look see as to how this is going at about the same time or a month after the Board of Health looks at it, to see how they're going as far as the time goes. I don't know that, I suppose we can condition it in that way, but...
Oh, I've been, I live in a mixed-use site, and I have had the pleasure of waking up at 5:00 o'clock in the morning every Tuesday when the dumpster next door gets answered. And I know they're not supposed to do it. I always thought about complaining, but then when the Board of Health said, well, we don't care if they do it 24 hours a day, I said, well, I don't have a leg to stand on on that position. So, I mean, that's, if they think, just the fact that they vote that way, that it's good at any time, you know, that's, their issues are sleep and health and everything.
But that's their issue.
Right.
That's not our issue.
Right.
Our issue are the bylaws. And we do have the noise bylaws. So whatever other activity that doesn't...
I guess what I'm saying, if we let them out here, we're also saying they can go into neighborhoods and pick them up 15 minutes later, because they're not gonna make them wait for two hours between 5:00 to 7:00. And that's the point I'm trying to make.
That's what we're talking about, isn't it?
Yes, so...
Okay.
But that's not really our call either, though. That, that is the Board of Health's call. That we, we're only talking about on our site. And the noise violation is another, another enforcement issue, not ours. That's my...
Exactly. And that, that'll be their call as to where they can go and where they can work.
They should be sensitive how they do it, be as quiet as they can, and hopefully not get any complaints. And if they get noise violation complaints, then that's, then we have an enforcement officer to deal with.
Okay. Is there any difficulty? Yes, Ralph?
No, no difficulty. Jim, I do believe that it's not 24 hours that the Board of Health will start it, start at 2:00 AM.
2:00 AM, okay.
Okay.
I stand corrected.
Just wanted to point it out.
And I, I think we could potentially put in there a clause that says that there wouldn't be, I understand you can have flashers or something like that, rather than the backup beepers, to indicate...
If that is the case, that would be wonderful.
I don't think that's for us to...
It's not for us to decide, no, but...
That's how they would deal with not getting violations.
The noise, that's right. The noise law.
That's their, up to them to deal with it.
That's state law. You can't, you can't mess with that state law.
I know you can. So it's, that could be a problem.
Hands off.
So are we agreed then 5 to 10:00? Or would you rather have it 6 to 10:00?
I'd like to see a show of hands on the options.
Okay, 5 to 10:00.
I'm okay with it.
Two, five, six, five of us, and...
Five and a half.
Five and a half. Yeah, I'm like a 5:30 here.
Five to nine.
Five to nine.
Five to nine.
Yeah. And the reason we picked 10:00 was because that's where the town bylaw noise kicks in.
I was just looking at two eight-hour shifts, that's all.
Right.
But we don't have to hear that.
Yeah.
No. All right. And then what will be the type, number, or amount of vehicles, equipment, or supplies to be stored? And I will tell you right up front, what troubles me is unlimited empty dumpsters. I haven't calculated it, but if you calculate it by the dumpster area and the square footage of a dumpster, you could potentially have several hundred in there. And that's probably a lot more usage than we envision. So I am thinking that in some way, it should be limited and not unlimited.
Well, this is where that previous discussion came from, the 30% of the site used for the accessory business. That's where, what we were talking about before we got into the philosophical discussion today.
Okay. Then you go to the equipment list, and you've got the things that are definitely the accessory business. Under A, they really are all, they're permanently located on the site. They were all there originally, under the original permit. Under B, we have, we've got the first five, I believe, that were there originally, that are, were there originally, but two of those can be used for trash. The 10-wheel roll-off trucks and the six-wheel dumpster delivery trucks. So there's a dual usage in there, I believe. And you guys who know a little bit more about this, please say something if you don't agree. And then we've got the packers, which definitely are, have to do with the trash. We have support trucks, and I don't know what they are. They could be support for any one of these operations. So it's dual support. And then obviously, the sander trucks for snow. So we've got a few in there that come into part of the 30% calculation. Then we go to C. And a number of those were already on the original list of approved equipment. The new ones are one 35-ton low-bed trailer to move equipment. And that's one of these guys that, that kind of thing, is loaded to the ground. I don't have a problem with that, but that most likely is to do with the trash business.
No.
No, it is. It's moving front-end loaders and big pieces of equipment around.
Aha, thank you for correcting.
It's how you move your non-road vehicles to your site. It has more to do with the construction.
Construction, thank you.
Yeah, that's...
Okay, thank you. One roll-off trailer, trash?
Could be. Sounds like it.
I think it is. One dumpster delivery trailer, obviously trash. One 100-yard walking-floor materials travel trailer. That's a 300-foot piece of equipment. No? 100 yard?
Yard is cubic.
Oh, sorry. This is what I don't know about equipment, you understand. But it definitely has to be...
100 yard. That wouldn't be a lot on the road.
How do you get that on the road in pieces and then you assemble it?
Can I interject, just for a second? So to me, I, I'm not as focused on the exact material, equipment list, because equipment comes and goes and changes.
Okay.
And, and it's nice that he's provided this detailed list, but I think this is something that's gonna change again. And to have to regulate and try to keep track of lists and numbers, I don't think is where we should really go.
Okay.
I think if we, if our decision is based on the fact that the accessory use is 30% or less of the site, just ask the applicant to bear that in mind as he's operating, and just kinda keep track, because dumpster cans rust out, you have to get new ones, trucks and equipment break down, you might have to buy something else, it might be a different size. You know, deals come and go, and equipment changes. So to focus so much on numbers and sizes and try to calculate the size, I don't think that's gonna really work for us in the long run.
My major purpose in doing this is it's not only the empty dumpsters that would take up 30%.
Right.
Right.
There's equipment associated with it.
Much more equipment that would take up the 30% of the space.
And we're gonna have to just rely on Mr. Cavosa to just keep in mind the parameters of the permit and say, you know, I can only fit 30% of this lot with dumpster stuff, and when I start to get beyond that, I gotta think of something else.
Okay. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah. I think if it's delineated on the, on the lot, this is how much space I have for this equipment, that should be enough.
When you say delineated on the lot, you mean, okay, I'm gonna keep this stuff all right here.
You take, you take whatever square footage is, makes up your 30%, and what you can squeeze on that, you can...
We might have two 15s, but it's 30%.
Yeah.
That's fine, but then we need to have it put on whatever we approve, for the delineation of what's 30%. Okay. Okay.
You can't really specify just exact areas either, because when they come in, they might have to put something here or there. I mean, it's gonna change, but it's just to keep in mind the volume of that accessory use should be 30% of the site or less. And he's just gonna have to kind of keep track of that himself, because we can't do that for him.
My feeling about a delineation on a drawing is, to me, it gives me a visual perspective. If you just say, oh, well, 30%.
Except it's a dynamic site. It's a dynamic site, equipment moving around, different things changing. You know, I, I think if they get out of line and we have a 30% rule, we can go and enforce it. I don't think we have to say, well, you know, you gotta only park it here, because that way we can tell it's 30%.
That's not my intent, Jim. My intent was to delineate what is 30%, so that anybody who does go in and looks at what is stored on the site, has a visual here that says, okay, 30%. And I don't know about you, but I can translate things.
So you're saying...
A little less than a third is the way I look at it, and it's...
And a third of eight and a half acres is...
It's a lot of stuff.
So I guess then, you're kinda saying, maybe we'll figure out what these two spaces are, and if that's 20, then you know you got a little more room.
Right.
Something like...
Yeah. It, it, to me, it's just an easy calculation. I mean, it's, like you would for the parking area.
Okay, but what I want to ask you then, is it 30% of the vacant space? We didn't discuss that last time. Or when we're talking about a building here, we're talking about a hoop building here, we are talking about the tower area here, a storage area here, this is the fueling station.
I don't think you can exclude those.
30% of the entire site.
30% of the site, right. The usable part, I guess. There's some, I guess there's, could be discussion of whether or not the setbacks are included in that.
I don't think they could be.
Right.
Okay. So it's 30% outside of the setbacks. Now, my question then is, and by the way, I'm bringing you... I'm bringing these questions up, not because I have any preconceived notion on this, but because I think we have to thoroughly define it.
Well, the only question about the setbacks, they have carved into this hill and put in these huge mounds in order to make parking areas that we have already, so I think that would have to be included. We can't count this out.
I agree. We've already.
Okay.
We've already done that. I think it's great that they did it. I don't think you can see it. I think these areas, that, so see, half of it's, the setback line is here, we can't take that away.
Not arguing that.
So, no, okay.
But the reason that this was done is because this was supposed to have been planted in and made of vegetation. And that was, that didn't happen. That's on the 2002.
I thought it was material storage.
Nope. That part became that, but part of our decision was. The 2002 plan is on the table for you. It's underneath. So you can look at it if you want to. This was supposed to have been replanted in here with native vegetation.
Yeah, but did the 30?
Oh, I see. So that is.
Okay, look, you can have it done.
Okay.
So that was, it's the trade-off.
So this, this 23,000 feet has been excluded. That's a half an acre.
You see, that's, that's the flip out. We gave that for that to be flipped out.
Yeah, I'm all right with that being excluded from it, because it's clearly marked on the past plan.
Okay, but then we may want to assist that this be planted.
It says loam and seed with indigenous species.
So now we're moving on, if you're ready, to number three, supplies to be stored on site. Within the storage trailers and new buildings, supplies such as the following: spare tires, toy parts, mechanic's tools, welders, steel, motor and hydraulic oils, road waterline, in forens, flexible piping, PVC pipes and fittings, water hydrant assemblies, landscape tools, and supplies in forens, such as hydroseed and hay bales, and silk fencing. I personally don't have any problem with any of those supplies. I don't know about the rest of you.
Nope.
Nope.
Okay. B, up to 10,000 cubic yards of loam and small quantities, less than 100 cubic yards each, of gravel, stone, wood chips, seashells, mulch, miscellaneous landscape materials. And again, I personally have nothing, no objection to that. It's the same as what had been under the other permit. And then C, byproducts of site slash excavation work, including, but not limited to, asphalt, stone, and concrete to be recycled to road-based products. Our prior permit indicated that a permit had to be received from the state to do this. And there's no permit like this in our files, so I don't know if a permit was ever received. And this is a repeat of that permit that we gave in the 2002 decision. So we should have had that permit in our files, if there was one.
What's that, a DEP permit?
It's a state permit. I'm not sure if it's DEP or what agency gives it. But that would have to be applied for and received if this was going to take place under the revised special permit that we're looking at. I'm just bringing this out because you all should know that. It's part and parcel of the original decision, and it is not in our files.
So we reiterate that in our new decision?
We must. That is a requirement for that activity. Number four, proposed fabric sub-assemblies. Attaching fittings to piped assembling hydrants, welding, it must be, to pipes, attaching fittings to pipes, assembling hydrants, welding, and light carpentry. And that should be okay too, I think. That was under the old permit. Then number five is proposed accessory activities such as ordinary maintenance and repair. A, screening materials, that was under the old one. B, ordinary maintenance and minor repairs only as necessary to maintain vehicles or equipment, including welding and light mechanical work. That means nothing major is to take place on-site. C, recycling of byproducts of site slash excavation work, including but not limited to asphalt, stone, and concrete, to be recycled to road base. And again, I would reiterate that the permit has to be received for that, A, B, C. And we should see a copy of that before any of that activity can take place on the site. Okay. Then we go to conditions. I better stop right here. Does anybody have anything they want to comment on that we've been over so far?
Only, so the last one, the recycling of byproducts. I guess it's something I should have asked during the, while the hearing was open, was it just like moving them around, or is that like a rock?
No, that's like crushing them, because it says to give them.
To burn into pavement.
Right. They use it as a, you know, all the underlayment for roads, the road base. So they use it for that. And that has to be regulated by the state. I think the only time it can't is if it's taking place in a sand and gravel facility that's operational.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so shall we move on to conditions at this point? Okay. What conditions on the issuance of the modified special permit that is the subject of this application does the planning board wish to impose? And I know Ralph has already brought out, what would you say, a six-month review of the site?
No.
No?
No, I'd say until December 31st, 2014.
Okay. And then, what, yearly thereafter?
No, then it'd be reconsidered.
Aha, okay. So.
Special payment permit would, conditions of the special permit would be reconsidered.
Okay. So December 31st, a review, and then reconsideration, correct?
Yep.
Okay, now, on the 2002 permit, we should review the kinds of things that were on there as conditions, and see what else, what of those we want to bring forward on it. Okay, we've got the generic, it shall be constructed as approved, but you know, it'll be delivered as approved, I guess, or however. Let's see. The applicant shall provide a paved area for the parking, washing, and refueling of trucks. And I believe that's been done. I know the, the fueling station, I believe, is paved, and equipment is depicted. And I believe the new fuel tanks were put in, but we can check with the fire department on that to make sure. And I think we should before we do anything further.
I just, I have a question, maybe Marlene could answer. They're asking for modification of the existing special permit, not a new one. So why wouldn't we just leave, why wouldn't all of those just be, continue to be applicable unless, unless they've offered, unless they've asked for one of them to be deleted? So why, why don't, why don't those all just stay in the special permit?
You might want to change some of them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we could add to them if we want.
Well, then we change it by virtue of adding new ones to our new decision. So.
Well, we're asking, what conditions from the prior decision is the planning board wish to keep? And we could say all. And what conditions are the issue which is the planning board, you know, does wish to impose? That, that sounds like we're asking, we're going to add more. That's the way I interpreted that question.
Okay. But remember, there are only 12 empty dumpsters, and that's condition number eight.
Then we have to change that one, obviously.
Right.
So we do have to revisit.
Okay.
We do have to revisit all of them, then.
And the applicant shall only store full-covered dumpsters, no more than three, on the site in extraordinary circumstances.
Okay.
And shall limit such dumpsters to a 72-hour timeframe. We may want to keep that in. I don't know how the operation goes. We may want to keep that in. Because again, landfills might be closed when the dumpsters arrive there on site, and we definitely want to have them covered. I don't know that they do stump grinding anymore. Okay, so we, that comes out. But we can leave it in, just in case it picks up, so it still applies. The applicant shall preserve and not utilize the undisturbed area designated in the northeast portion of the property, exchange for the proposed screen, and berm parking area within the required 75-foot yard setback. We definitely want to keep that in, because it has to be fulfilled.
That was the trade-off. That was the trade-off.
Yeah, and it wasn't fulfilled. The applicant shall install caution, trucks entering slash exiting signs on Route 151 under the direction of the town engineer. Darned if I've ever noticed whether they're or not. Yeah, okay. So that's the kind of thing that we can simply refer to. All of these still are in place?
Well, we have to change some of them.
We have to change some of them.
Are we going to go through that ourselves, or should the staff go through and bring them forward with the changes necessary?
So the only primary one I see that really needs to be changed is the 12 dumpsters needs to be changed to 30% or less of the usable space.
Formulation of the dumpsters and equipment related to them cannot exceed the 30%.
Yeah, because it's not just the dumpsters, it's the equipment related to. Okay. Yeah, Marlene?
And when you read this, you will need to, you will be changing some of your findings. Like, you have to specify the equipment list attached, which will obviously change. So those, those will be changing as well.
Right. But we will specify, they've submitted a list, and that's what, that'll be our finding, that that's the list.
That's attached, just like the one was for 2002.
Right.
So that changes the numbers by virtue of the attachment. We don't have to go back in and change that.
Cross it out, see attached.
Okay. And then what conditions from the prior decisions? I didn't go way back in time, because this is what, 2002 is the third or fourth?
I did read them briefly, but I focused more on the 2002, because that's the last substance.
Right.
To me, the most important one, and it only became clear now, was, you know, why are they getting to use the setback? Everyone, even, we're all asking that question. And the reason was, they traded off this piece here. So I, I don't, I think we got to, you can't have it both ways.
No, they can't.
So I think that we've got to stay with this and let them use the areas where they put the berm, because that's, it's already built. It works great.
The reason, Jim, that they had that, that we gave them that, is for travel.
Right.
It became very narrow here.
It just makes sense. It's blocked from the street. It makes really good sense.
Yeah. Yeah, it took a while for that berm to grow out and looks quite lovely.
How do you grow a berm? What do you plant?
Grow out.
I know, I was kidding. I was joking.
But that's, that's the why of it, because you see, they needed this for travel, safe travel in here, because it got narrower there.
Yep.
Okay. Have we hit everything? Because at our next scheduled meeting, I think it's our next scheduled one, isn't it? We have the joint meeting with the selectmen next week. And so it would be the week after that, we would have, I believe, a.
26th.
The 26th. We would then have a draft decision. So have we said everything that we want to say? So we obviously have another cut at it with the draft decision, in case we go, uh-oh, forgot this.
So the 19th, there's no meeting?
Right. You're meeting the 18th?
And then we'll have a regular meeting afterwards?
No.
Just a joint meeting?
Just a joint meeting on the 18th.
Okay.
Okay, and I want to make absolutely sure on this. We are looking at the decision again December 31st.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Well, we won't necessarily be looking at that if it isn't, if, if that isn't a Tuesday. But I mean, the permit, the permit should be, the special permit should be eligible for reconsideration December 31st.
Okay. And sometime shortly thereafter.
Probably.
We would be looking at it, because that is the holiday season.
Probably.
Okay. I have not heard of that before, so Marlene is going to have to check to see whether we can actually do it that way. I don't know.
Do you mean what would trigger a revocation, or does that become a final, if, I'm not sure what triggers what?
I'm concerned about our workload and bringing things back and going through it. I think if, if there's a violation, can't we bring it back at any time? I don't really know.
No, we don't. Violations are handled by the building.
Yeah, and zoning enforcement.
Inspector, zoning enforcement, yes.
Let me ask this, Ralph. What would, what would we be talking about at this meeting?
Well, I, most of these things are complaint-driven. And so I would, I would want to revisit whether or not there are issues about what we have, what the permit allows that have been complained about.
And I would think that would be most likely the hours of operation.
Probably.
So that we would reserve the right to change the hours of operation.
Yep.
On or about December 31st.
So if there are no complaints?
It's a slim dunk then, I suppose.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just, you can just grant the permit.
So that, so you're narrowing the scope of that review to the hours of operation?
No, I'm not. That's just a suggestion.
Right. I, I just said it's most likely to be.
What other, what other things would we be talking about?
I don't know. Anything that's in the permit. Anything that's in the criteria of the special permit.
Like, look, we've got fall planting time now.
I myself think it's too high a standard to have them come back in, in such a short period of time. I just think that's too quick.
Do they need to come back, or we would just?
We normally have a review in a year. That's the normal, a year from the issuance of the permit. And I should say, the normal in my experience has been a year.
But that's just for us to, to review the file. It doesn't mean that the applicant has to do any work or show up.
Or it's not a public hearing? I mean, you know, it's not open. We review written complaints and everything, but we don't have to take testimony? And that's what I'm trying to get, understand what we're doing.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so the review is a review of the file, not, not a new hearing?
Normally, it's the staff that reviews the site, to see how things are going.
That's a little clearer.
And then action can be taken if there is a violation, I suspect. But action is usually taken by the zoning enforcement officer. However, with the types of things that we're doing here, that we're asking, if certain things have not taken place, then we need to look at it as maybe pulling the special permit back up again and taking another look at it. So, and that's kind of like what you're talking about, Ralph, that if this is not working, then maybe we want to look at it again. And my thought is.
What if we find out that there's excessive number of dumpsters there that, okay, somebody says, I went in there and there was 83 dumpsters lined up. You know, I don't, whatever. It's complaint-driven, basically.
But we also, to have an inspection, have to have that written into our decision.
Well, if you're going to have an inspection, then you have to put that in the conditions, I think.
We do.
That you would say that there would be an inspection of the property on or about December 31st of 2014 to, in reference to compliance of the conditions.
I would think you'd want a year, because that gives you awful. I would think you'd want a year because that gives you all four seasons as well.
To work out?
It gives you all four seasons if we go a year.
Yeah, it does.
Because, you know, we're looking at three or four months at this point.
Three or four months? You'd do it by the end of this month.
And I know your impetus was the Board of Health and when they were going to look at it again, but we're really two separate issues.
I don't know.
And I know, too, and I know what you're talking about, so... So what's the feeling of the board?
I don't know. I would think that the year review would make sense.
Year. Paul?
I think we should do it for a year.
A year. Ralph, no. And I'm, I'm okay with a year. So, and remember, if there are complaints, we'll hear them before, most likely.
And that's my point about the four seasons because in the winter, when you have no trees...
That's when things get loud.
So I think it actually gives people more time to complain, I guess, so...
Okay, I think we've beaten this as much as we're going to tonight. And so we'll...
Did you get all that?
Look towards the draft decision.
What date?
Uh, the 26th. Got to find my agenda again. There it is. Okay, so we move on to planning board... I know. Planning board articles for November town meeting. And three of these we've already pretty much talked about, so we need to vote at this point. Do we want to recommend them to the November warrant? The first one is to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 240-zoning of the Code of Falmouth by deleting the words in quotes "for the elderly" close quotes, where they appear in Article 32, "profit or nonprofit housing for the elderly," elderly, or do or take any other action on this matter on request of the planning board. And I believe we had a discussion of it the last time. Are there any further questions on this? Then I, yes, Ralph?
I move that we recommend that article for Fall Town Meeting 2014.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. The next one, the article to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 240-zoning of the Code of Falmouth by deleting in its entirety Article 18 floodplain zone, or do or take any other action on this matter on request of the planning board. Any questions, further discussion on this? Yes, Doug?
Could you remind me the reasoning for this?
Yes, this issue is going to be under the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
Which is pretty much where it properly belongs, not under us.
Okay.
Okay? Any other questions on it? May I have a motion to recommend it?
I just have a question.
Yes.
Conservation's going to do it anyway, right?
Right now, the authority is with us, and it shouldn't be. It's got to go to where it belongs. And conservation, yes, but it's like, there are two entities here, so we just want to put it where it belongs.
So... When we had a discussion about potential housing in a floodplain, it was a discussion for us to take up. Would this mean then it's no longer under our purview to discuss?
We can discuss it, Marlene.
No, the planning issues are still, future planning issues are still your domain. What we're talking about here is, right now, there's a, if you want to alter the land form or if you want to build in certain flood-hazard areas, you have to get a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Conservation Commission has an overlapping jurisdiction. So back when the town first adopted the firms, the wetlands regulations hadn't been written yet. So they were put into zoning. But now that we have wetlands regulations, that's, they have that authority and they're doing that work already, so instead of having people to kind of duplicate efforts, it's going to be just, just housed with them and taken out of zoning. This also, this also came about because with the change in the maps, we're used to looking at plans in two dimensions, but remember, in reality, there's the third dimension of elevation. And with these changes in maps, if the firms are in zoning, that would create hundreds of nonconformities based on the elevation of above base flood height. So in order to, in order to not entangle ourselves in some of the nonconformity issues, Conservation Commission doesn't have, doesn't have pre-existing nonconforming clauses that they have to grapple with. So if, so they would be doing the work already, and it will be preventing a lot of people from having to deal with pre-existing nonconforming issues with the zoning board for anything they want to do to their property.
Okay.
So, but, so we're really not shifting our work burden. We're taking something that ZVA is doing and saying, no, that's all conservation. It's not changing our role at all.
No.
That's what I heard you say. Okay, I understand.
Yeah, and this will be on the, this is on the tentative agenda for the joint meeting next week. And Jennifer McKay from the Conservation Department will be there to kind of explain to you and the selectmen some of these changes.
Okay.
Would this end in a net result of less regulation?
Yes, because I mean, if you...
That's what I'm hearing. Because right now, you've got to do it twice, is what you're saying.
No, well, I mean, there's that, but the real issue is that if you're create, if you make a structure nonconforming, because this is in zoning, then even if they want to put on a dormer on an otherwise perfectly conforming house, you're forcing a special permit.
So everything would be, that'd be a nightmare. I understand. So every little thing would be a special permit.
You're creating an additional nonconformity that would affect hundreds of people.
Maybe more than hundreds.
Okay.
I understand, okay.
Okay. Everybody's okay with this now?
Yeah.
The explanation? Okay, then.
Was there a motion or not?
No.
No, now we need a motion.
I move that we recommend that article, unnumbered, the second article, for approval at, to the warrant for approval at town meeting.
Okay. Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. The third article, to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 240-zoning of the Code of Falmouth by one, deleting Sections 240-185 A, B, and C in their entirety. Two, add to Section 240-195 C a second sentence in quotes, "Design features shall include but not be limited to site planning, building replace, building placement, building size, design compatibility, exterior appearance, construction materials and finishes, parking and roadways, landscaping and site grading, building entrance and exit placement," end quote. Three, delete Section 240-195 E in its entirety. And if you'll remember, that gives us essentially the function of the Design Review Committee. Is there any discussion on this?
Or at least some of the function?
Yeah, yeah, not the sign review, but the, the, looking at the design of the building.
Site plan review.
Site plan review, thank you. Is there any further, Paul?
When we discussed this last time, I had suggested that we have this discussion with the Design Review Committee before moving forward with this. Has that happened?
It has not, but we have had no comments from them. And I know we, we got the support of the enterprise. The editorial was quite nice about this, that they think it's a good...
I think it's a courtesy we should at least...
We should, and we will.
Discuss it with them before we vote on it.
I think we can vote it because we can always take it away.
Wait, okay, so you're not voting, you're voting the article to the warrant? Then you have to have a public hearing where you, and then you need to decide on a recommendation. So things may come up during the public hearing. So this is, this is just the beginning.
Remember, we have replaced articles in their entirety based upon...
No, I understand that, but this is a volunteer committee that's advisory to the planning board. And as a courtesy, I think we should have a discussion with the members of that committee before moving this thing too far forward. And I think that's only natural that we should do.
I agree, but we're not moving it too far forward. We're going to invite them to public discussion. And that's where, that's where they need to do it at that time.
If they have a public discussion, pretty far along.
But we have to do, we have to move that before we go to public discussion. And I suppose we could send a delegation to the Design Review Committee. What do they meet, once a month?
I think it's a phone conversation. I don't think that's to be a formal thing. I think it's just, call the chairman and say, look, what we're considering is, we want you to be aware of it at this time. I think that's just a professional courtesy to do that to a committee. And that could be done by Brian or Marlene or somebody. It doesn't have to be a formal thing, but I think we have to at least advise them that we're considering this as a courtesy.
So you'd like to hold off on the vote on this?
No, we can vote on it, but I think we should, we should do this as well.
That's fine. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Could I have a motion to recommend this to the warrant?
I move that we recommend this article to the warrant.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Then, we have these things, the land use and the coastal resiliency. And right now, what we're looking for is placeholder, because remember, we don't recommend these to the warrant. It is the selectmen that recommends them. And we've been discussing these with the selectmen, but it's, we vote our approval of them. And remember also that we, that town meeting only looks at the goals and the policies. So we don't have the action items attached to these or the narrative attached to these. And if nobody has any problems, we can vote them as placeholders. We're also going to try to have housing in, but with no guarantee at this point. Yes, Ralph?
What's the significance of the large words, of the large words?
Oh, it's just formatting. It's...
Does that, does that mean changes or something?
No, no, it's just, Marlene was playing with the formatting for the eventual look of it.
Emphasis.
So would that be in the final, the final draft would have those words being like that?
Not in the warrant article.
No.
Not in the warrant. The plan could, if...
Okay, yeah, 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 okay. All right, thanks.
But not the warrant article.
Okay. Any further, any comments on this? Because if you're good with this, we can vote it to, we're satisfied with it, we can give it to the selectmen.
This is also on the agenda for the joint meeting next week, too.
Didn't we?
So those of us that haven't seen this before, we've got until the next Monday to look at...
Yeah, we don't have to vote on it now at all.
Okay.
It's just a matter of, do you think that we'd like to see placeholders on the November warrant?
Right, and we're going, and this is on the agenda with the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah. So if they would like to do so, we can have a joint vote on it. It's acceptance. But do you see any changes to it?
Did I miss that change, Bob?
I don't know. Didn't we have a discussion about 21st century?
Didn't we change that to something else?
We took it out, but I think we put it back.
Put it back in.
Yeah, we put it back in.
We did take it out temporarily.
Yeah, okay.
And you all can look at it and...
Take pencils to it and, you know, if you see anything you'd like to change.
And I'm sure the selectmen will have some changes to make in it, too.
We really talked about it a lot last time, and I think some of what we were going to change, and we realized, actually, we came to make sense of the wording, and I think, I think it's pretty well done.
Okay. I think with coastal resiliency, you, do we, you know, we have a narrative on that.
Yeah.
And that made it make more sense with the narrative, but we didn't, we wanted it to be able to stand on its own, too. So... Okay, there is no general correspondence. And the next meeting, as you see, is August 18th. What time is that going to be?
It will either be, we're trying for 6 o'clock.
Okay.
But that hasn't been confirmed yet. But it will either be 6:00 or 6:30 because the Board of Selectmen does have a regular meeting afterwards.
Okay, that's, that was my next question. So this will run for an hour?
About an hour.
Okay. So obviously, we're not going to be getting into too much detail.
Is that a Monday?
It's a Monday. Okay.
Do we have an agenda?
Not yet.
It's tentative.
We had a meeting set up last time. Isn't it the same agenda?
It's essentially the same. There'll be another couple of things put into it, I think.
Let's call it over at the last minute because of the canal celebration. You must have an agenda for it.
What I'm saying is there will be a few other additions, is my understanding. It's not going to be identical to what it was, like the FEMA thing is going in there, which it wasn't on the last one. So I'm assuming we'll have it out by, say, Thursday? Is that a good assumption or Friday?
Yeah, they post their agendas on Thursday. It's a Monday, so Thursday at the latest.
Thursday, okay. So we should have an agenda by then, and it would be emailed to us?
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to close?
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Lot of work.